Can we?
That on set should be late.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the work session order and before I turn it over to our distinguished president, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube. It is important that those within the room remain quiet unless participating in the discussion, and that those attending over Zoom keep their cameras off and microphones muted unless participating in discussion. It is important that those within the room participating in the discussions be audibly into their microphone, and that those attending over Zoom unmute themselves and turn on their cameras. And I'll go back to you.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to.
All right, thank you. Is Ron Bolt on Zoom at the moment?
No.
He's the first item on the agenda.
See where he is.
If not, we can move on to the second item, which the discussion fee schedule, but let's give him a moment.
Do you think you forgot?
That's not.
Yo, today I'm way here. I saw some guys doing pull-ups on a tree limb on, what's the park? On when I turn.
One of our trees.
One of our trees.
There's probably a legal.
Well, it's also probably dangerous. It's that park on the left hand. You know, when I turn right off of Surrey on to Dorset.
Is it a rest?
I had no idea. I should have stopped and talked to him.
All right.
You probably put no pull-ups on the trees.
It seems to be beyond ridiculous. We'd have to do something. Right, we.
Oh, he's not answering.
All right.
Why don't you move to the next and.
Yes, okay, so we'll move on to the fee schedule. Discussion, and we were given the fees of neighboring communities to look at, get a sense of where we sit. First of all, any reactions to how we sit relative to the neighbors? I saw a couple of things myself, a little interest. Anybody? Yes, Rohit.
Yeah, thanks. So just comparing to other neighborhoods, I was just trying to figure out here. I noticed that the town of Chevy Chase has also something called performance bond. Whereas, is that the same as the deposit that we have? I mean, performance bond and deposit doesn't mean the same thing. So that's one question. The second question I had is that I noticed that the town of Chevy Chase also has fees for decks, pools, porches, et cetera.
Where are you seeing that? Did we get her?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. It's on the.
In the packet.
In the packet.
Sorry.
So they have a hundred dollar fee for altering a porch, porch covering, step stoop, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then they have a hundred dollars for new fence, new wall, new hedge, and so on. We don't have, we don't seem to have fees for those. So just, this is just to understand, am I reading it correctly that we don't have them? Is there a reason we don't have those? Thanks.
All right. We. Jeff, if you want, you've been around longest.
Well, I mean, I think that that's a good question, but I think that the staff should find out more. I mean, you know, part of the work session is to get questions from people.
Don't you think that historically, we have been in a very small town mode where everything is cheaper? And it's time for us to come out of that. You know, we are, we're not, we may, we're not a small town, and we need to increase our.
I mean, they don't do the same kind of, we do the most extensive regulation, because that's part of our culture. And, and fees have been, in the past councils have been reluctant to raise fees because sometimes people will look at those fees and say, oh, it's much cheaper to live in Somerset than it is in Tennessee. So, you know, this is why we have this discussion. Whatever you all, whatever you all think, because you make the final decision. And maybe more research is required. Remember, you can raise, the whole idea of having this discussion was that, that the fees are related to the revenue, obviously, and you're passing, you're reviewing the budget next month, but you don't have to change the fees at the same time necessarily. So.
Right.
So it's, but it's good that, I mean, I think the best thing would be to get people's opinions and also to get people's questions, and then we can bring that back next month, bring the answers back next month.
I mean, I saw that too, Rohit, by the way, that, that there was a fee for almost anything you did in your property is what it came down to. And I thought that was sort of a little bit too over government, if you will, that, that is. We can be a little bit more relaxed about that. It's not like we need the money from those things, and it, I think, my sense is that we should let homeowners do small things themselves and interfere only when it gets in, give you a problem with the neighbors, basically, things that are likely to be a problem with the neighbors.
So let me just clarify. When it says here, all building addition, in our fee schedule here, it says all building additions, does that include or not include decks, porches, steps, stoops, and things like that? Because others may have been more specific, but I don't know what the term all building additions, in our case, refers to.
So I can answer that. That does include it. So specifically, what our code defines as building is any permanent structure, whether a main or accessory structure, having one or more stories in a roof. And then so for our purposes, we include porches, stoops, basically anything connected to the main structure. Or, or if it's accessory structure, accessory structure.
Okay. Anything else, Rohit?
Yeah, I mean, I think since we're just discussing it at this point, I, I would put it out there. I'm sort of with Debbie, I think that I think the fee schedule should should tend to be a little bit heavier on larger houses. I mean, a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation, you know, if, if someone is building here, for us, it is two hundred dollars plus one dollar per square foot above two hundred. Whereas in the town of Chevy Chase, it's a thousand dollars greater than seven fifty. So if it was seven and fifty in our neighborhood, it would be nine hundred and fifty dollars. But the point is that if you're doing a lot more than that, it's actually much cheaper in our neighborhood. I sort of feel that I think that we should, I mean, I agree with you, I think it's a balancing regulation versus
Individual.
Liberty or whatever.
Yes.
But I think, you know, if someone's going to build a really large house, they're going to afford it anyway. Frankly, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine the fees are going to make too much of a difference, but to the extent that we can also send a signal that if it is a smaller home, you might say, these are what we would call more naturally occurring affordable housing in some sense. And so there is some advantage, I think, to our town regulating. I'm using, I'm using the word advisement. I know that, you know, people don't like the term, but regulating in a way that does give some signal that we would prefer that more modest, smaller, moderate-sized homes in Somerset stay smaller and more moderate sizes. And then if you're going to put a very large house, that's certainly your right, we're not preventing you. But the financial signal from us.
Right.
Is it's going to cost you a little bit more than you thought it was.
Yeah, right. I, I mean, Shannon or Debbie, any thoughts on that?
I totally agree, and I think that, like, as far as, like, the new home construction, I think we should follow more like Chevy Chase Village, which is, you know, right here. We're the exact same as them as far as, like, our proximity and, you know, all that stuff. So like, to raise it to a five thousand dollars for a new home, like, I think that, that is fine. And I think that, like, I would rather see, like, than these changes of, like, the, you know, maybe not a generator, like an HVAC, or, you know, all the different things, like, I, I would like our fee structure to mirror our, like, philosophy for, like, the town. So like that, you know, maybe we don't nickel and dime on every last little nitpicky thing, but then, you know, if someone does want a pool or a this or a giant house, then, you know, we charge more for that. And, you know, because we do know that, like, when we have these new home, people coming in for the, for our meetings and for permitting, they take a long time, and there is a lot of review, and it is like, you know, billable hours, it's a lot. And, you know, I just think that we should, as much as we can try to, you know, not to sway, because, like you say, you're, you're able to do whatever you want, you know, but, but if it's, you know, if it's, I, I think that we've seen some people coming in through here that have been doing some pretty reasonable-sized renovations that are making their houses so much nicer, but not expanding to the gigantic degree in the driveway and the garage, you know, all of that stuff.
And you want to encourage more of that, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I would like to see more of that. And, you know, our houses, as you've always pointed out, you know, with the mid-century modern or the ranch houses that we have in our neighborhood that, you know, may or may not be in style at a given time, like, it's just so easy to take that footprint and put on a second story and do a really, like, nice renovation for those houses without tearing it down and making a six thousand square foot house.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I wanted, I wanted to talk about this permitting thing, where the HVAC and the generator. I'd like to say those are two very different things. We all need HVAC systems. And, 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 you know, normally when you need an HVAC system, it's an emergency. Not normal, I'd say, I know for myself.
Yes.
Sometimes you upgrade, you know.
Oh, yeah, usually.
It's usually an emergency. And to raise that, I wouldn't bother raising that, but a generator is a much different deal. It causes a lot of noise and a lot of bother to maybe the neighbors. And I would pick that one up, if we're going to nitpick and go through this.
Yeah.
But I agree with everything that everyone said so far, but I want to be careful about the small things that can be annoying, like.
Yeah.
You know, my neighbor's got a new fence. It says, you like a new gate? I'd like a new gate. The guy said, I can't do without a permit. Really? So I had to run up here and give my seventy-five dollars and get a permit years ago, don't worry. And so, you know, I think we need to be careful and be, you know, thoughtful as we make some of these changes.
And also, I mean, as far as the town hall rental, like, I would actually not like to increase that because I think that, I think that we should encourage our residents to use the town hall, you know, for events or things like that that they want, because it is part of their tax dollars. And, I mean, it is like a benefit to be able to host a kid's birthday party out here. And, you know, to not make it that unaffordable, that, you know, people kind of shy away from that. I'd like to see more people do more events here personally.
Do we only rent to ourselves?
We've got to give Kebir a word, too.
Oh, sorry.
Just, Kebir, your thoughts?
Thanks, Robin. I, I agree with what, can you hear me, by the way?
Yeah.
I think what Shannon was saying resonates with me, sort of striking a balance between, you know, finding ways where there's a rational, sort of good reason to increase fees, and then also balancing it with not nickel and diming people on various things. And so at the highest level, that framework resonates with me. I think to Rohit's point, observation at the highest level, that is there a reason for us to align our fee schedule with neighboring towns? I think that's worthwhile trying to understand. I think the one thing I'll say is that for, you know, to Jeffrey's point earlier, you know, in terms of the budgetary impact for the fiscal year that we have just reviewed, you know, I think the, I think we're going forward with the current fee schedule. I don't know if EJ wants to clarify that. And I, I don't know whether he made changes already in the way we've modeled revenue for various activities. So it might be good to have that as at the back of our head, at least for this coming fiscal year. And to Jeffrey's point, we, we don't have to resolve this for this budget. I mean, it's always nice, but we could do our work and land on the right set of things. The one, one thing I have heard from residents that I'll throw in the mix, which is, I suspect controversial, which is that, that residents, and this is associated with the pool, there are residents who are long-term residents and would love to, you know, be able to invite their grandchildren and their children to come to the pool as guests. And, you know, there's a way to kind of make that work in a reasonable manner for them, where the fees that are charged are not unreasonable, or it's somehow included as being a resident. I've heard that from a number of older residents. They're not, you know, fervent pool users themselves, but they like the idea of having the pool open to their children and their grandchildren for a couple of months in the summer. So something for us to consider as we, we think through the fee schedule. But overall, I agree with sort of Shannon's highest-level framework. You know, we find ways to increase where it makes sense, and at the same time, let's not nickel and dime people where it doesn't make sense.
Right. Debbie, did you have more to say?
No, I think, thank you. I agree with everybody.
Some guidelines, Ron might have something to say on it, but generally, we want to keep our fees as ways to compensate for losses incurred by the activity, is what it comes down to. We can't generate fees as a source of income for ourselves. In that context, the demolition fee struck me as low. And that also ties into tear downs. It's, it's set at five hundred dollars, and it's set roughly at that in the other communities. And I see that maybe in terms of inconvenience, then five hundred dollars is right. I mean, it is an inconvenience to have a tear down, because you've got heavy trucks coming in, and they're parking on the wrong side of the road. We've heard all about that, and, and it's a problem. But they're also doing damage to our roads, these things. I mean, they're, they're carrying heavy equipment on trucks on our roads and sitting it there. And I'm absolutely convinced that some of the deep drops in curbs that we have are a consequence of those heavy vehicles landing there. And that requires money to fix. So I think the demolition fee is, we can justifiably raise it, and it's also a signal, again, that we think tear downs are expensive, and perhaps people should think about renovations first. That, that's, that's one thought that I had. The other thought that I had, and again, this is implementing it, is a couple of communities have got graded increases for new homes depending on their size, so they move up with charges on their size. And that's, that's another thing I think we can think about.
Good, ask for it. Ron, this is town attorney.
Well, other communities.
Do we have the authority to do that?
Yes.
That's good.
Generally speaking, what case law provides is that your permit fees should bear a close nexus to the cost of implementing the permit program. As Robin said, they can't be used to make a profit. Otherwise, the permit fee could be deemed an unauthorized tax. So generally speaking, most permit fees are actually much less than it actually costs you to review and process the permit application. So you're unlikely to run into a problem there. I, I would like to think about a little more about whether you can offset street repairs with a destruction, a demolition permit fee. That's a, a new question for me. I suspect the answer is, is, you know, maybe no, because it's not related to actually processing the application. It's related to restoring damage, which is typically covered with bonding rather than with permit fees. Because if there is no damage, then, you know, you wouldn't want to be charging someone for it. But I can think about that one a little more. But then, with respect to a gradual fee based on square footage of the addition, there are several communities that do that. You know, ultimately not a problem, because again, those fees are still under what it costs you to actually process a permit, considering staff time, independent contractor time, and, and my time.
What, what is our law about the size of trucks that can be on our streets?
We, as far as I know, don't have a law.
And can we make, can we make, so to go to Robin's and others' point, so can we make a law that a certain-sized truck, if it's, has to get a permit to come into our town? And that way, you could recover the money in case there was damage?
Yes, yeah, I think that would be permissible.
There you go. Because otherwise, what you're saying is that the only way we could really recover from the damage to our streets is, is to prove there's damage.
It's with a bond, yeah, yeah. Prove, prove who did it and have a bond, yeah, which is very difficult.
So I guess we would have to research is what, you know, what is the size of the truck that's coming in here? Or is it only for the, is it only, are big trucks only coming here to do demolitions? Are they coming, like, how much, how, how heavy are moving trucks? And then we should charge a fee for that? I think some places charge for, for if you're moving, right?
I think this is going to be very hard to, to minister. Yes, it has to be easy possibly.
Well, no, it's nothing hard, because you see the big truck, and if they don't follow it, that we just tell people if they're, if they have a moving truck, they have to get a permit.
I mean, it's not only the big truck. It's, it's that they're often carrying heavy equipment on the truck to demolish the house, and so it's even more weight.
So let's say, let's say it's a cement truck. I would think that'd be a pretty heavy truck. But what I mean is, so are we going to police start? Is it going to be, oh, God, I saw a cement truck in here. I better call town hall. And then our town hall staff are going to go running.
Well, but that's true with any law we have here.
Yeah, but there's a lot of that going on. That's a lot of time on our staff.
I don't think there's that many, I mean, any given day, are there that many cement trucks that come in here?
I don't know, but.
We know where they're going, right?
Yeah, I, I think Debbie's right. I'm trying to wrap my head around enforcement. And generally, generally speaking, you know, if something is difficult to enforce, there's not much point putting it on the books.
It's a nice idea, but I think enforcement is hard.
Yeah.
And I think a burden.
Yeah, but if you tell people, but, but see, if you, if you pass a law and you tell people, most of them are going to comply. It's just all about letting them know what the law is.
I, I do think it's worth looking at moving trucks, because moving trucks are, I mean, I think, you know, they're actually supposed to have a sign there on the street if they're going to have a moving truck there. Because I can tell you, at least on the corner of Fallstone and Uppingham, the the grassy area there, the curb, has been damaged by several moving trucks. Because when they take that left turn to go up, when they come down Uppingham, they go left to go up Fallstone, they can't do that turning. They can either go into the Albert's yard, or they can cut that corner in front of mine. And you're welcome to have a look. There's, there are two nice tracks diagonal across the curve.
That should be, that.
And I think this, so I think we, moving trucks is easily identifiable. But construction stuff is very difficult, because different, you know, lumber comes one day, and then cement comes another.
Well, that's, that means the burden is on the builder to let us know. It's not like we have so many properties that are being.
I guess I might do other towns do this. I think this is just a burden to enforce. You know, I'd rather throw it on the bill.
So another, something else that you could do, Mr. Town Attorney, is we could restrict the hours of moving to, and we could require you get a permit if you need, if you're going to be moving, right?
But I mean, that's a kind of, you know, like, oh, I'm so excited. I bought a house in Somerset. And like, you know, now I've got to go and like, schedule my window, and it just seems a little big rubber.
Welcome to Somerset.
That's your side. I'm destroying these ideas.
If, if we're going to do a fee for trucks, I do a fee for a certain weight, rather than fee for a demolition vehicle or a moving vehicle, but weight over thirty thousand pounds, or that's the number, whatever the weight is that we set, and fully loaded, that is.
But I mean.
To.
I.
Yeah, I think it's going to be very difficult to enforce, because then you've got to weigh the trucks potentially.
Right, right, right.
We give away inside right on here.
We could do that.
But I did watch, like, at the bottom of Cumberland yesterday, like, by Devon and Cumberland. I mean, I watched this truck going back and forth, because he had to go back, you know, and to try to turn on the street and all the cars that were there. And I mean, it was a long time that this guy was doing that. I mean, it is a pain, but.
Well, kudos for him for making it right.
Yeah, yeah, instead of just plowing over everyone, I guess.
I think to Rohit and Robin's points, if I can jump in very quickly, Robin, the, we do have narrow streets. You know, it's just the reality of our town. And so trucks of a certain size are likely to cause damage as the way that Rohit described. Now, what do we do about that? I think if it's not weight, maybe there is an automatic truck-sized permit, a fee that needs to be levied, and that covers sort of the broader, it goes into the broader maintenance of our street infrastructure, because these, it is just, it's, it's very obvious to anyone driving around that we have very narrow streets, and large vehicles will struggle to make those turns. Large vehicles will likely cause curb damage. So, you know, that, that is undeniable. So if there's a way for us to capture that, you know, and I appreciate where you're going with that, Robin, with weight, because it's in the direction I was thinking. Maybe we can ask EJ to, to research that, if possible, with Ron, to see what's possible there. But, you know, I agree with Shannon. At the same time, we don't want to penalize people moving in. So it, it could be levied in, in sort of a general sense, for trucks of a certain size, so it's not targeted at moving trucks and so on.
I, I wonder if, what other communities do. Do you have, EJ, do you like go to a breakfast or a meeting, a monthly meeting with, with your peers from the other towns?
Semi, partly, yes.
Okay, because those are some good questions to bring to, to that group. What are you guys, what are they doing? And then we can think better about it, because I don't think we're ready to really think about this yet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of my other eleven clients regulate truck, truck traffic on the streets.
Martin's Edition.
A bond for.
And what about Martin's Edition? Is that one of your clients?
Yes, it is.
And they don't, because that's.
I don't believe.
Fully narrow streets.
Yeah, the, in the town of Glen Echo, there are some federal limits on MacArthur Boulevard, as I recall. But, you know, I'm not aware of my other clients regulating truck traffic. State law says you can, you can prohibit through trucks.
Well, we, yeah, well, we have those signs up. No through trucks. You know, another thing that we can do, this, this fee, but some towns regulate, you can't have a commercial truck parked like overnight. So you, so if you had a business and you had a truck, that some of the towns have that around here?
Yes, Martin's Editions does have that restriction, and it's, it's modeled after the counties. The county has similar rule that says you can't park commercial vehicles on streets.
And Somerset never adopted that?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vaswani has posted something in the group chat, which I'm happy to read out, or I don't know if we can invite him to weigh in, that would be useful. Do you want me to read it out, or should we ask him?
Yeah, why don't you do it?
Want me to read it out? He has posted something from Chevy Chase Section Three. And it says, if you're moving into Section Three, we are delighted to have you join a wonderful community, et cetera, et cetera. The turning radius of our corner is very tight. Large moving trucks cannot turn corners in our community. Moving trucks with a cargo space of, they have given a certain limit or less can turn corners. If your mover has a larger truck, we will have to make arrangements for them to park on a white street, and then they will have to use a similar, smaller shuttle truck to your new home. Anyway, it just gives you a benchmark that there's at least one town that has some guidance around it. Anyway, it's just gives you a benchmark, that there's at least one town that has some guidance around it.
All right, um, can we hand this to EJ and say, we searched the issue of how do other towns handle large trucks with narrow streets? Got one example there that Kumar has 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 found, but, uh, and if there's any, um. Way in which we can issue a permit, um, around that, uh, would be good. All right, um, the other thing is, are we in favor of the idea which has come up of, um. Increasing the fee for new houses by the size of the house, which, uh, a couple of the other communities in fact do that.
Yes, it could be great if EJ could research that a bit more and I would be a favor looking at that at the next meeting.
All right, for for that side of thing, anything else, I mean, the, um, Shannon suggested. Or Debbie, you suggested that, um, the generator. Fee should be increased more and the HVAC fee should probably not be increased, will that be what you think?
I wanted, I wanted to separate those, those are two.
You know, it starts with the general point, what is the rationale for increasing any of these, the, the town hall rental, the generated HVAC? Ron said that it's supposed to cover your processing costs. So are we saying that our processing costs have gone up for these items and that's why we are increasing the fees for them?
I think the fees have never covered all your costs, I I wanted to say as well. So, I mean, EJ could give you better numbers, but, I mean, you're probably only covering a fraction of your current cost.
Right, which means we've got room to increase them, um, according to what we think is appropriate, um.
Let me just. The, let me say one thing about the town hall, the, and I guess Linda's in here, right? Oh, she's answered, remember, so years ago, we decided that. And Linda, is this still true, that if there's a turn, someone has a party on Saturday? Then don't we get a cra- cleaning crew in here afterwards to clean it up for Sunday? Linda, can you hear us? Because we didn't.
Hey.
I know.
Uh, no, we we stopped doing that because, uh, residents were kind of complaining, uh, about that. And that's when we just went with the one set fee of the three hundred dollars.
They're complaining about what?
Because we were charging the fee and the additional cleaning fee. Right now, we just charged.
Did the council change that?
Yeah, well, that's when we changed it to, it's three hundred dollars, but the the cleaning company only comes in twice a month. So they're no longer coming in after each, after each, uh.
But I thought that, I thought the problem was, is that if someone rented on a Sunday, they were complaining that. Because, you know, you're supposed to live in an room within condition.
Correct.
A lot of people didn't, so then I thought we instituted a fee. So that it would be insured that it was clean for the next user.
Well, that was, that was just something that Matt and I kind of, it was never really approved by the council, so. That's when, uh, I think the council said, no, they didn't really want to do, do that, that one twenty-five fee. That we would just do the three hundred dollar and the four hundred dollar deposit.
But have there been, have there been any complaints about, about people that are? Because sometimes people, sometimes we have, potentially, we could have four events on a week.
Right, right, um, I haven't gotten any complaints, I mean, I've come in and seen. I mean, it's not bad, but sometimes people, there are, there is, there are crumbs and things that are left on the floor. And, uh, either Thomas or Jose will clean, uh, clean up the following week. But I haven't gotten any complaints from anyone who's had, if we have a party on Saturday and then there's another one on Sunday. So, so far, I haven't gotten any. So, because I know the cleaning people come in on Sunday, Sun- Saturday or Sunday evenings. Hello?
Okay.
Debbie, do you want to propose a differential between the generator and HVAC fees?
Uh, okay, leave the HVAC system where it is. And I would take the generator, it's pretty steep, but I would take it up to two hundred bucks. Because it is a big deal when you put in the generator, in the, you know, you have to get, you have to get our, our engineer out there to measure the sound. It's a big deal.
I agree.
And I think we should discourage generating.
The, the, the other thing I'm going to point out is that new HVACs are in fact very quiet. Um, they've gone way down in noise over the years because that's higher efficiency when you're, um, being quiet, so. It leaves generators being noisy, is the point, that.
And they are really noisy.
Well, and the HVAC fees on all the other towns seem to be only fifty dollars, so we're already a little bit higher, it looks like.
All right, so anyway, there's a suggestion to separate the generator and the HVAC fees and one suggestion of five hundred dollars for the generator fee, so.
Should we reduce the HVAC fee to Shannon, your observation?
This is, sorry, sad again, Kabir.
Uh, uh, if I heard Shannon correctly, I think she was observing that our fee for HVAC is higher relative to neighboring towns. Should we reduce it then?
We could take it down to fifty, which is closer to the neighboring towns.
What does it cost us when we do, when I I I change my HVAC system, does somebody come out and measure the noise after?
Yep.
Okay, so.
We, we have to, for an HVAC permit, we have to, um, confirm where it is on the property, uh, plan. And then we have to, uh, and then all the typical permitting, and then the sound check.
I would leave it at seventy-five then, it sounds like it's a little more complicated, especially for, um, you know, like renovation or rebuild, so. I don't think it's out of order, even though we are hired.
All right.
Yeah, I agree, but I just want to take it off.
All right, uh, so anyway, there's a, all to increase the generator fee, uh, to research the, um. Graded, increasing fees for larger homes and to look to see if any other town, how all the towns are handling large trucks in their town. All right, uh, any other things around housing before we move on to the, uh, pool? All right, okay, um, so.
So the, the code provides that your, your fee schedule can be adopted by council resolution. So I can draft up a resolution for your next meeting to change those fees.
Well. I don't think that. They should be changed before notices placed in a journal and people have that to comment.
See, so the, the resolution could be introduced at the next meeting then?
Yeah, that's what I would say, right?
Okay, sounds good.
Does everybody agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
That, well, I skipped over the town hall rental, um, are we in favor of increasing it or do we accept? Shannon's point is, we still want to make it easy for residents at three hundred dollars, um, what's the thought?
I mean, my, my general point is that if you're going to increase something, I think it's important to explain why.
Right.
And that's what residents would expect us to be able to answer their question, if somebody met me on the street and said, you increased the rental from this to this, why did you do it? Just give me the answer and then I'll, I can say whether I agree or not.
Yep, so I'll just quickly comment on why I recommended the fee be changed is, uh, two factors, um. One, and it's not, I don't think it's shown in the materials provided, unfortunately, because it's on a separate sheet. But, uh, not a lot of other communities rent out their spaces like we do. But on the ones they do, we're on the lower end, Chevy Chase Village, for example, uh, rents out. They don't, since their village hall is much bigger, they rent out three separate rooms. And the one that's comparable in size to ours, uh, is actually quite a bit cheaper, um, of course, we're quite a bit cheaper compared to them. And then for us, um, for rentals, it just takes a lot of staff time for them, um, which we are approving, but. Uh, right now, there's, since there's an application process, um, there, uh. They, we do have to make sure that they clean the space.
Could, could we do, like, maybe raise it for non-residents?
You know, right now, residents, uh, it's only for residents.
Oh, sorry.
EJ, are you saying that the current fees don't cover our costs?
It's a bit tricky to say because it's not consultants that are doing the work, it's, uh, the salary staff. But it is just, it's, uh, the time I've noticed that, uh, can be taken up by rentals. Uh, for me, the fee does seem low, um, but my recommendation was primarily based on. Uh, us being much lower compared to other municipalities around there.
Because increasing the fee will not necessarily free up your time, which is a separate question.
Yeah, yeah, it won't necessarily cover the time, but it will cover more of the time. May, I guess, the best way to put it would make it more reasonable for the time being spent on the rental.
Good point. And, um, can you give, can you give me a sense of how often it's being rented and how? What kind of events are these, are they like one-hour talks or four-hour birthday parties?
I could pull up the, I could give you the exact schedule, but we have a couple of different events a month. And it kind of ranges, a lot of birthday parties, uh, some graduation parties, uh, multi-hour events, um. Sure, keeping it just to private events, to also public events, but it's primarily, yeah, so there's different sort of parties, um, for residents.
Do, do you ever notice if people have rented it, but really rented it for someone else? Because I encounter that at the pool.
Well, so residents, not, residents, if they make it clear, they are allowed, so if, uh. Residents are allowed to sponsor non-resident events, so I guess there's a bit of asterisks when I say non-residents can't rent it. Is, um, we do allow residents to rent, and then if a resident, uh, is gonna sponsor it. And like, be the one that's held like viable, uh, for any damages and is, and is, is gonna be there for the entire time. We do allow, uh, them to sponsor and sell.
The rules, the rules are approved by the council. And so you might want to look at them, you might want to have that in a work session.
No, I get that, because we have the same thing for the pool and I, I, I've been there when someone says, I just rented it for my hairdresser's kid's birthday party. I'm just gonna leave soon, I said, well, you can't.
But that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, and I said, you can't leave, you can't do that.
So, to Councilman Roback's points, and she's a neighbor here. Just so you know, that I, I know you said that it would be great if people use it more, but. The reason why historically we don't encourage is because you're neighbors. And so if you think there was a lot on pickleball, if this thing became a machine here, like four events a weekend. They would be right at your door, just so you know.
But I mean, I think that we can, you know, safely cap, you know, we would only.
But we don't have that now.
We should do that, though, we should have like a, a, you know, a, a calendar. That says, like, we can, we will only do two events a week, or, you know, something like that.
That is a good reason why, that in a future work session, we should look at the, at the rules. Because all your good ideas will come out, but, but right now, all of the staff can do is follow what the rules are. And right now, there could be, there is discretion with the town manager during the workday. But on the weekend, there could be four events every weekend.
We never, it's. Yeah, so I just put it up to make sure it's set correct. Is, the current policy is that we do not allow it during normal business hours. Um, the only sort of event that could happen here is a public event. And then, uh, there's rentals allowed Friday night. And then there's a, our rental, rentals are allowed all day Saturday or all day Sunday, um, but.
Are they allowed during, they're not allowed weeknight, after, uh, is that changed?
Yes.
You can have it on a weeknight.
Well, you could, you can have it on a, uh, so it's weekday rentals, uh, may not begin until five.
Oh, yes, so we could, so, so Councilmember Roback, there could be an event here every night of the week, after the current homes. I mean, I think.
All right.
That seems a little.
I'm just saying, that's, but that's what the rules are, that's why.
There's, there's so mu- only so much time this evening for this discussion, um, are we okay with raising it to three fifty?
Yes.
All right.
I'm in favor of trying to meet EJ as close as possible to EJ's proposal, so yes.
All right, and, well, are you okay with it?
Um, we're not taking a decision today, right?
No, it's just, I mean, it's just.
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I don't have any strong views either, one way or the other, I just, I'm still processing it in my head.
And Shannon, are you?
But remember, three of you, then it moves forward and then it goes.
I absolutely find the moving forward.
Okay, all right, that's four of us, Sha- Shannon, are you staying at three hundred or do you want three fifty, okay?
Do, do you guys remember what it was like a, like, a year ago, before we, because we changed these like recently? Not recently, but in my tenure.
Yeah, since he's been. Linda, do you remember, does Linda remember?
Because we got a lot of.
When I started working here, it was fifty dollars for a rental. And then Matt and I updated, went to two fifty and then the one twenty-five cleaning fee. And, uh, uh, we had this discussion with the mayor and said, well, we needed to put it into code. And that's when we switched, changed it to three hundred dollar rental and four hundred dollar deposit, so.
We did get a lot of complaints when we raised it from the fifty dollars or whatever it was, I don't know if you guys remember.
I know, but, but that's when, that's when Matt and I also, we looked into other areas and we were way below. Uh, because I looked at, uh, against Garrett Park, other areas that had, uh, rental, uh, spaces. And I even looked at some restaurants and we were way under.
Yeah, I'm sure we're under, like, for sure, but like, but, but we did get complaints from like. You know, different people who had had like a school thing here and stuff like that, so, I mean, to me, I would raise it, but, you know.
Well, let me say one thing, so the, the, I think, do you have the power? So the, so the mayor has the power to sponsor it, right? Yeah, so we, so when there is an event, for example, there's an event coming up. It is for, uh, Somerset, former Somerset students that are now graduating from high school. So I'm sponsoring that event, so it's, so it's free. So we, we, anything that's related to the residents, we, we waive the fee.
Okay.
Just so you know.
We do have.
We don't, we don't waive the fee for a birthday party or anything.
No, we have a carve-out for, um. The town manager, mayor may waive the fee and deposit in part or in whole if. One, the rental is open and free of use and is free of charge to any resident of the town. And has some sort of significant civic, educational, artistic, or social benefit to a substantial number of residents.
Okay.
Yeah, just saying.
So that's a nice clause.
But that's something that you can look at.
All right, so we'll, we'll.
So just, I, I'll just clarify, the reason why I'm hesitating is I'm trying to understand if there are any sort of times when people want to. Reserve the town hall, say, just for an hour, for a meeting of some kind, of some group they have or something. Charging them three hundred should not be the same as charging a birthday party or a graduation party or a soccer end-of-season party. So I think that the town hall should, maybe, maybe there's no demand for it. But if there is, if there are, you know, if, for example, I would like to, just as an example, if I am a parent soccer coach. And I want to invite the seven other coaches, uh, in my league, just for us to have a one-hour meeting on how we're going to do things and maybe there's some issue you want to discuss. I think charging three hundred dollars for that, it won't be an open meeting because it's seven, eight coaches or something. Or, you know, somebody's house isn't available for a book club meeting because painters have to come or something. And charging them three hundred dollars for an hour of a book club in the evening, I think is excessive. So I'm trying to figure whether there is some flexibility, if that's administratively practical for EJ. You think that, you know, something that is relatively small, contained, one hour, we should have a lower fee, right?
Well, that's why we'll bring it back, so the, so now we get the juices flowing.
Yeah.
For in about a month, and we'll, we'll go over there, because I don't think the council has really looked at those rules. Since you all were in, and you know, we used to, I think we used to review them yearly.
Yeah, and, but I do say, I agree, you know, like, if, if someone wants to use this room for a simple meeting. It's different than having a four-hour birthday party with kids everywhere and cake and crumbs and like, you know.
Right, you know, we, we recently, Julie Greenberg had, had a speaker and she came to me to ask about it and.
That was under the waiver of a public event.
That's right, so, you know, EJ said, don't know, she can do that here.
I'm talking about a closed event, but.
He's turned it into a private event, he just said, there isn't.
I think we need to talk more about that.
And, and, you know, to your point, really find out who, who is using it, who is renting it, like, why.
All right, well, we, we can.
But I do think it's a benefit for the residents to be able to utilize the space and it's, you know, it's a great.
We can, we can see, we can see if EJ finds. We can, we can see, we can see if EJ finds any other town that has got a Brady rate for the town hall, depending on the length of the meeting. All right, um, the one other thing is the water aerobics fee. Um, I'm happy myself with uh taking that to eight dollars. Justification is that um water aerobics has seen increased attendance in the last couple of years. And they have um generated more money by that increased attendance, which has covered the costs of the coach.
Now, did you hear what the town attorney said earlier? That these activity fees can't be to make a profit? Well, I think that those fees make a profit.
Well, I can argue you out of that one very quickly.
Well, they only make a profit by accident.
But see what, let's see what the town attorney says.
Before we let the town attorney speak, can I talk to you about indirect costs? Um, and it's a sensitive subject. In, in, in other words, um, we paid. Nine hundred thousand roughly for the uh renovation of the pool facilities last year. But that's not a cost that um residents paid for other than through their property taxes. Um, we pay for lights, we pay for heat at the pool. Um, and those costs are part of running.
Uh, ask Ron, I, but that's not related to the.
Ron, does that why? Related to the cost of any individual activity in the pool.
So, so Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chair, the case law I cited to expressly concerns permit fees. So that doesn't address activity fees. The law's probably the same. But I think you might have some leeway there to say, it, it's not, the fee isn't just for paying the instructor. It's also for chlorine, electricity, or what have you.
The resident wins.
Do we know what the instructor is gonna charge us this year? Cause last year before we set the fees, I called and spoke to the company. And so I think, I, I think you can't really have this conversation. Eight dollars sounds great. Where we can't have the conversation if the instructor is gonna be more, a lot more money than last year.
How about we hold it, we, we propose to reduce it to eight, providing the instructor is not increasing her charges.
Or if she increases it, then we do the math. You know, we had so many people last year. You know, let's say we had, you know, two hundred, two hundred different times people used it.
Then we need to find out whether she's increasing her.
Right.
I'm just wondering whether there's a slightly different way of doing this, cause I, 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 I find the current. Um, methodology somewhat co- complicated and it seems administratively burdensome, because what it say, what you're saying is that. First, we get a, a, an amount, uh, amount that we have to pay to the instructor or the company. We pay that amount upfront. We have no clue really how many people will do this over the course of the summer. But especially if it rains every day in July.
Or it's cold.
Or it's cold. So we have no clue what it's going to be like. Um, and we might be overcharging. We might be undercharging. Um, we're basically, uh, you know, have a situation where, my understanding is that in. Last year and prior years, we overcharged and then had to make, or they decided to make September free or something like that. This is my understanding. So I, I, I wanna put something else out there. Why don't we? Have a billing system uh that's, that we, we know how much we're gonna get charged. Let's say it's four thousand dollars for the summer. And everybody signs in, takes the class, and in September, you get a bill. From the town saying you attended X number of classes. And four thousand divided by total number of people that, sessions that have taken place. This is what your share is. And I think we can trust people in our town to pay their bills. Uh, if they don't, they'll be banned from pool next summer or something. But to me, that is an administratively cleaner way of doing it. That way we don't have, it may turn out that we may only have to charge four dollars. It may turn out, we may charge everybody ten dollars depending on how many sessions there and how many people show up. But at least we don't have this problem of maybe too much now, too little now. We know how much this person is going to bill the town, we'll pay it, and we will trust that at the end of September. Or whenever the se- season ends, Linda will, or somebody here in the town hall will send a bill to every resident saying. Thank you for enjoying water aerobics. This is the bill, your bill for water aerobics this year.
So mainly you're saying there's people sign up and say that, you know, at the end of the season, in September, blah, 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 the pool closes, we're gonna send you. An accounting of.
Yes, because we sign in, we sign in at the pool every time we come for a class. I mean, I, I know this, but I did some of the classes last summer.
Actually, we could make Lucy responsible for anybody who didn't pay in that.
Think, you know what? I think residents need to be out of this. I think this is a town hall thing and it shouldn't be somebody.
I think the company, the company should, should get the list of people who attended that day. And then the company should send that to Linda who can enter an Excel file. In September, Linda sends the bill to each one, each resident who, based on their classes, and she can do a simple calculation, four thousand divided by X. And that's why is your bill for the year.
I, I'd love to try that and see if it becomes administrative nightmare or it's wonderful.
Stretch sheets, it's quite easy to do, figure it out how much.
Well, one, do we have still the records from last year? So that, could you actually see whether it could have been done last year that way or not?
Yeah, and this um, as in addition, so last year, the total cost for water aerobics was uh four thousand one hundred. And we're expecting with the same schedule for the, be a hundred dollars more, forty-two, uh, four thousand two hundred.
Okay.
Divide four thousand two hundred by people sessions.
I love that idea. I'd love to try it.
It, it, it's, what I'm concerned about is that we have a simple way of counting who attends, so that, that there's.
Cause he is part of the problem, it's always the problem, that they go to sign in, they sign in at the desk. And system isn't up. And then the guy who's ever at the desk, if there's somebody at the desk.
Yeah. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a hard piece of paper and I, I, I sign a, I, I enter my name and address on a sheet of paper there.
I love.
Collects it and she collects it at the end of the class and I'm not sure where it goes after that, but that's.
I love the idea that the instructor has to actually provide, that there were ten people and here they are. And the fellow was there, Shannon was there, well, it goes there.
Do you want a little more work? Do you wanna go search that and see if it can work? It's really.
Online, something we could try. I think we could make it work.
All right, okay.
As of right, as of right now, what we, the way we were doing it, is, as it was saying, you signed in. Lucy or someone brought me the sheet and I input the sheet, deducted the, the fees from each person's account. If there were no funds on that person's account, I would send them an email and tell them, please add funds to their, uh, to their account. So I have a spreadsheet of last year uh of everyone who attended and how often. So.
So, so in principle, we have the information where we can do that calculation.
Do you think, EJ?
But it varies, you know, I think the most, I think the most we had one day last year was saying twenty-three. And maybe the, the least we had is maybe say seven. So we're varied of how many people will.
And, and, and it will say, and I will say as a parting shot, that of course is only figuring the direct costs of the um.
You know, the one, I wanted to just quickly get in here and what I'm gonna say, I suspect all of us agree with, which is. This is an activity that's been going on for many years. It's a good thing that older residents are investing in their health. And I'll using the pool. Um, you know, if we can, we don't have to hundred percent recover the costs. Even if we are counting right down to the indirect costs, Robin, as long as we are somewhat recovering our costs. And, and we are staying clear, I think Jeffrey's point is still valid, that occasionally we do run over. So uh, if we have that kind of broad principle, you know, I would encourage us to think along those lines. And every year we seem to battle this out over a few dollars here and there. And overall, it doesn't make a huge dent in our budget. So just, just let's just keep that in mind. This is a good activity. It's good for residents.
I, I, I was just doing a grumble. I, I agree in principle with the idea and I think we should try it, uh, is what it all comes to. Um, all right, uh, we're gonna go move back.
So how do you wanna move forward on that?
I, I think.
Ryan to draft a resolution? What is your rat?
Uh, no, we had a problem and we've solved it very much.
All right.
How do you wanna, how, how are we supposed to move forward with that? Is Ryan gonna draft a um resolution per introduction?
Uh, that's sure, that's a good way to handle it, yes.
Were you all decided?
Yeah.
The three, is that what three of you wanna do?
It's fine with me.
Yeah, I think that Anna and Rohit presumably is fine with him because that was his idea. So yes, that would make three of us.
You heard, two, please.
Yeah, I did, I did, Mr. Mayor. Just, just thinking how procedurally it might run a little smoother. Perhaps my, a suggestion could be you, you keep the current process in place, but at, at the end of the year. You could do an accounting and refund money, you know, rather than collecting the whole amount at the end. That just worries me that, and then you're gonna have the burden of, of reminding people, can you please pay? Can you please pay? I'd, I'd rather see the money placed i- in the account in advance as currently done, but.
I, I, I agree, but we get, we will get such pushback on that.
No, but that's how they're doing it now.
No, they're not.
Refund now, it's free now.
It's free now. You sign in and they, they take the money at the end of the summer. So if you go to water aerobics ten times, then at the end of the summer, they'll take money out of your pool account.
No, no, that's not how it's done. I take money out of their account after each session.
Oh, at the obsession, okay.
And what's broken with that? I, I'm trying to understand what Linda described. Why do we find that broken?
It's easier for me.
Yeah, I would imagine.
No, what's broken, what's broken with the current system is we are having a, an endless conversation of eight dollars, nine dollars, six dollars, seven dollars. Ten dollars. We don't know what the amount is. Uh, and this eight dollar number is an estimate. I think it's a fair estimate, but I don't know if it's. Right or wrong. And it's completely dependent on, to be blunt, on the weather. Uh, so. Uh, and Lucy uh is absolutely correct that there's an element of lack of fairness. When those who have paid uh for the first couple of months, uh, essentially then. People in late August, September get free lessons because everybody overpaid upfront. So I think it is a much, frankly, a much cleaner system to build and Linda already has a system that can build. But ra- but what I'm saying is rather than asking people to pay upfront, we bill and we already have the systems in place to do the billing. Um, and because I, unless somebody tells me that there is going to be a problem with people not paying. Uh, which I fully recognize would be a, a difficulty. But if there is, I, personally, I, I don't think there are people in the town of Somerset who are going to run away from paying their water aerobic spills. Uh, and as I think Robin said, perhaps under his breath, uh, Lucy is always there. Uh, to make sure of peer pressure, uh, to get everyone to pay their share. So, um. So I think to me, to me, this is why I prefer a system that builds based on utilization. Rather than a current system of paying based on a very inexact estimate that might again result. Uh, in a free September or possibly even an underpayment. And then we're gonna have to scramble. To get people to actually pay more in the latter half of the season.
I just wanna remind everyone that this, originally the proposal from the original budget was to not. Charge anything.
By the way.
But yeah, just to, just to, wait, let me, let me finish. Just to make it fully available, free of cost. Because it's an activity that's good for the health of certain group of residents. That was EJ's, I think, and the budget committee's original proposal, if you remember. So that would be the least cumbersome method to move this forward without any debate. Um, and it's not a significant cost. If you look at all the recreational activities, we're spending three to five grand on. Youth activities, we're spending roughly the same amount across different age groups. So. Just wanna remind us, I, I, I'm fine to go along with where we, where, where we end up and Rohit would love to try your idea for the summer.
I'm also happy to go along with council.
Yeah, there is also a very easy, long-term fix to not.
The only reason, only reason I didn't propose it, because as a user of water aerobics, I don't.
And, and kudos to you for using water.
You don't have a conflict, because everybody here can take the class.
Right.
So let me just say something. You know that the, the, uh, if you introduce something in May. To be decided in June, the classes start on May nineteenth. So I think that, I think that you need. To make the decision at the May meeting, which is next week. No, it's the next week, May fifth, May fifth.
Right.
Yeah, in two weeks. So, so, so it could be, if you, if you change it, Mr. Town Attorney. If you, if they wanna change anything, uh, they could do it by. On an emergency basis at the May meeting, right?
Yes.
He's running.
Are you sure that the pool is opening on the sixteenth? Last year, the pool company asked us. Like not to start morning swim until a week later to get the pool running and everything, get out the kinks. So are we really gonna start water aerobics on the nineteen?
Well, I don't know, but it should be decided. Whatever it is, it should be decided in the May meeting.
Uh, water, water aerobics can start sooner just because the.
No special people?
No special opening here yet.
Okay.
So, so I suggest that the council makes the decision at the May meeting. And the town attorney can mention how you can do, how you can do that.
Right, okay.
I think it should be free.
Let Mr. Town Attorney, why don't you say what the options are and how they can achieve them?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So we have the, the policy for adopting legislation and resolutions. Which provides, you know, generally, we introduce at one meeting, adopt at a second meeting, but that policy says the council can. Suspend that practice as circumstances require. And so as the mayor's pointed out, you need to have. This uh in place before the water aerobics program starts. So I, I agree that you should aim to adopt the new rules at the May meeting. You know, I, I can prepare a, a resolution describing how the plan will work. How much it's gonna cost and whether it's a pay in advance or pay at the end. That sort of language could be tweaked by the council at the meeting. So I, I could give you some language. Yes.
But to pass it, it would need four votes, correct? Oh, it's a resolution.
Just an amendment to the budget resolution?
No, it would be, it would be.
Do with the budget to.
Yeah. No, a, a simple majority would be fine, Mr. Mayor. Um.
Okay. Cause it's not.
Well, as, as long, as long as we're not, as long as we're not putting ourselves in a position to have to amend the budget. If we have to amend the budget to fund it, then you're right, Mr. Mayor, we would need a super majority approval. It has.
But is it a line item in the budget?
Yes, but the budget, but the budget hasn't been adopted yet either, so.
Exactly, that's what I was saying. The budget was introduced with a fee, I think.
I know, but the budget, but the budget is separate than the fee.
The budget was introduced with the um, with the uh, idea of a fee in there. So there's like a revenue line for it, but the fee and the actual budget.
So if you, if you make it free, for example, you know, then you'd have to amend the budget.
Exactly.
To review, remove that revenue. The budget hasn't been adopted yet, so you can make that amendment, amendment to the budget at the same time.
Uh, uh, exactly, and that would be a, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, that, that's, that's effectively what I was saying, that a- as we adopted, if we would propose an amendment before we adopted. To what we introduced. And I, I think that just needs a simple majority, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
But, but the, but, but the, the number in the budget for the line item is irrelevant. Because the contract has to be approved.
No, you're, you're also right.
So, so the thing is, what I would suggest is to draft something that can be circulated to the town residents, citizens. In advance and they can comment that night before a decision is made.
All right, and the, the argument that we had previously was that as other. as other groups are paying extra for their activities, probably those early morning swim or the swim team, and those are beneficial activities for the individuals who are participating in that, then it just makes sense that all the groups should have some fee associated with them because they're requiring some extra off the pool, all of them, um, to perform those activities. That was the logic behind it.
Uh, and EJ's original proposal had this listed along other activities that we are fully subsidized. So there's a list of activities that we are fully subsidized for what it's worth.
But we're talking about the pool. Yeah, that's, I, I, I think, I think, I'd like not to mix up that we do free things in other parts of the town and, and I don't wanna lump it together. Let's only talk about the pool and what makes sense, okay? Uh, I'd like this to keep it to that.
And, right, and so I think we should move on, um, as we're running out of time and we need to hear the attorney report on um the recently passed Maryland HB one four six six slash SB eight ninety-one. And Ron is here now, so you can give your report.
Thank you, Mr. President, so. The House Bill one four six six is an accessory dwelling unit law. It takes effect October twenty twenty-five and provides that by October twenty twenty-six, jurisdictions need to adopt laws, policies promoting accessory dwelling development. It's a bit odd for the town because we don't have land use authority, so we don't adopt laws authorizing particular uses. So we, we might need to seek clarification on how that's to be done. But the, the real substance that I, I wanted to share with you tonight is this law says, when you adopt those laws or those policies, the laws that, that you adopt have to basically treat detached accessory dwelling units like other accessory buildings with respect to setbacks. So if you have a five-foot setback from the rear and sideline for a shed, an accessory dwelling unit has to be given that same setback. The town of Somerset does not currently impose special setbacks for accessory dwelling units. There are some neighboring jurisdictions that do. Because an accessory dwelling unit can be inside a detached garage, for example, or freestanding building. Uh, some communities have said that the setback should be the same for any dwelling, regardless of whether it's a primary dwelling or an accessory dwelling. So tho- those jurisdictions that have done that are gonna have to rethink their codes. You know, for example, you, if you impose a five-foot setback for a shed, you can't impose a eight-yard, I'm sorry, eight-foot setback for an ADU. The, the law also says that you're allowed to impose additional parking requirements for ADUs. And the town of Somerset has done that. Town says if you have an ADU, you've gotta have at least one onsite parking spot. Space in existing driveway can be used for that purpose. But this new law says, if you do impose new parking requirements, you have to have a traffic study discussing the needs and basically to justify that requirement. So you, we'll have to, you know, retroactively have a traffic study performed to support what's in the code, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I mean, we, we do have some time to implement this, but you know, as, as the law just passed and is awaiting governor's signature, wanted to bring it to your attention now. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did you say under this new law, did I get this right, that we have to promote accessory dwelling units?
Yes, it, it says you have to adopt, adopt a law to allow them.
Okay, to allow them is one thing, but promote is different than that.
Correct, yes, yeah, may- maybe, maybe promote is too strong of a word. Yeah, to authorize, I should say.
Okay, we don't have to like advertise like, hey, it's okay to.
Right, right.
We, we, we already do allow accessory dwelling units with very mild restrictions, only an extra parking spot really is all that matters.
Sorry, what, so, we, so if you already allow it, then what's new here?
Uh, the, what is.
What is new is the traffic study.
Is the traffic study, yeah, and I was, I was going, haven't we got prior studies by the traffic committee on parking problems? I mean, that would be sufficient probably because we sure do have parking problems in town, so. But we can look at that, we have time. Alright, thank you.
Uh, yes.
So, the only thing that really is relevant is do we already have a traffic study that would justify this from prior uh reports on parking problems, or do we have to create a study? That's what it falls down to. Anybody, any other questions on it? Okay, let's move on.
Well, why, well, why don't you also have Ron briefly explain the, the success of the law that got passed?
Context, context, context is what we want, alright.
Yeah, so we did a- achieve success in getting our technical amendment bill passed. It's also waiting governor's signature, and that law confirms that we do have authority to impose setbacks, height restrictions, other building requirements on multifamily structures containing up to four units. There was some confusion based on the language of the current text, which is twenty five oh nine in the land use article of the Maryland code, because it says we can regulate single-family buildings on land zoned for single-family use. But then it said, and other structures, and so it wasn't clear to some whether we were limited to regulating single-family structures only. And so the, the technical amendment bill that passed will confirm that we can regulate multifamily up to four units. So duplexes, triplexes, quads, um, not an apartment building that has five units if, you know, that's allowed by county zoning one day.
This is great news, you buried the lead. This is great news, so congratulations.
Yes, thank, thank you for helping to steer it through, Ron.
Right, yes, well, and, and special thanks to the mayor for his expert guidance on lobbying and, and setting up pertinent meetings for us.
Cause this, this actually went through on first attempt, and it's unusual for bills to go through on first attempt.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah. Alright.
And thanks to Delegate Solomon, of course, who was the lead sponsor.
Irene Lane.
Yeah, yes.
I do think we should inform the town, hope maybe through, through whatever means necessary, we, we.
A report, we are doing, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know as soon as it's signed by the governor.
Alright, um, moving on, we, we were really going to switch the topic now, um, discussion on several resolutions that are before us at the work session. Um, okay, I'll. So I'll hand it over to the mayor.
Okay, so let me just say that, so four resolutions have come across our desk. So remember last year, the council passed a resolution uh against antisemitism. And that, I believe, was suggested by the US Congress of Mayors, and that again has been requested. See, I signed on to it, but, but it's been requested at the council. Okay, is, and they sent a new one, right? So when that, when that came out last year, then Lucy Freeman and others were asking why there wasn't a general anti-hate resolution. So Councilmember Kumar drafted that, so that's what for you. Then there's Julie Greenberg uh wrote to me and said that she thought that the council should pass some kind of resolution to address all of the tragedies that the new administration have uh created. And Councilmember Kana wrote a beautiful resolution about that. And then lastly, we got a request last week from mayors, let's call mayors against gun violence.
Yeah.
To pass a resolution for the June, because June is um national gun violence, so then we're actually supposed to, they, for many years, and Mayor Chris Keller years ago, and now he's again mayor, he was suggesting in all the towns have orange lights on, was that, to have orange light bulbs.
Where, on all of our lights?
In some, some, I don't know, some, maybe on the front or something. So anyway, so those are all, now, my, my only question, the one about, the one about the gun violence needs to get considered quickly because it's for the June, for June. For the others, one thing that I, and I think it would be good if you went over each one, but, but I think it would also be good if these are published before you approve them so that our citizens can comment on them, but, um, that's just what I'm, it's all the options. I just wanted to lay out all the options and then, and that's all I wanna report. So it's up to the president how you wanna proceed now.
Okay, so anyway, the uh first one pop is one thing that Rohit drafted, um, and the bottom line of it, and we should all read it so that we, we, we are comfortable with it, but it calls on United States Senators from Maryland and the State Congressional delegation to use their offices to actively raise national awareness about the adverse effects of recent federal actions on our health and safety and so on. Um, endorses the effects of Maryland's Attorney General to challenge on courts the legality of the federal executive orders, uh, calls on the state of Maryland, like our county to take off off federal workers resigned or being dismissed subject to their change, agencies reductions in force, and encourages its residents to engage in civil discourse to maintain the terms of safe business, cut, have healthy disagreements, and have respect for each other's humanity. So that's the bottom line in it, um, and we should look at it and decide if we do are comfortable with it and vote if it's not that urgent. The second one is the hate and bigotry one, um.
Should we do it one by one, Robin?
If you want, if you're ready to comment on the first one, go ahead, I just, I wondered whether people are ready to comment on it yet. Are we all, have we all read it?
No.
No, see, that, that's the issue.
Sorry, I didn't realize that we had.
No worries.
Alright, so the second one is the anti-hate resolution, um, and it is rather than just antisemitism, it's, the, the, the whereas it's relevant is hate in all its forms, including racism, antisemitism, Islamophobia, homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia, ableism, and sexism. So it, it's tried to capture all those forms, what I would actually say there instead is hate in all its forms, um, among other biases, including racism. So in other words, open it up beyond those things, um, so that it is all, truly all forms, is what I'm looking for in that sentence. But otherwise, it, it is what I said, um, which is it is against all forms of hate. Um, people had a chance to look at that, like, comment on it. Alright, the one that we do need to think about fast is the gun violence awareness one. And, um, so it's a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be national gun violence awareness day is what it is. Um, and we have to fill out our details there, um. What they want us to do, uh, is simple, uh, encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and watering value of human lives. Um, anyone can join this campaign by letting to wear orange on June the sixth to help raise awareness about gun violence. Um, so that's, that forgot.
It doesn't have anything but the lighting, does it?
It doesn't have, as far as I can see, anything, but it's wearing orange.
I know it did.
Yeah, June sixth, my birthday.
Okay.
Oh, you're, oh, so we'll be wearing, happy birthday to Abby too, knowledge.
Uh, so we should all wear orange in honor of Debbie's birthday, okay.
I have a lovely orange shirt.
Okay, I, I have an old orange shirt, let's come off those and I'll see.
Well, it's particularly relevant now, given that there have been two school shootings, just in the last three, it's unbelievable.
So we would really want to adopt this one at our May meeting, and so it needs to be filled in before we adopt it, so, um, there are some things that need to be, um, added. Um, are we in favor of that, this one?
Yeah.
I am.
Sure.
Alright, then, uh, we can.
So, so EJ, so we'll just, we can just put that on the consent agenda, cause I, I don't think.
Yeah, that's sure, a- and it just does need a little bit of massaging to retain the right numbers. Okay. Alright, so that.
And the antisemitism one?
That, that, that was the anti-hate one, right? There isn't a separate antisemitism.
Yeah, there's a separate antisemitism.
Really?
Did you, did you, no.
Oh, well, I thought you had. Oh, okay, well, 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 I assume since, and then, and then also for June, we always do a pride note thing.
Did you have that?
Yeah, so that should be passed in May, cause otherwise, so is that alright with everybody if we put the?
Yeah, we can put it again.
Put it in all the consent agenda. That was, I want to give credit where credit's due to Councilmember Circo.
Former councilmember Circo, sadly.
Of blessed memory.
Not sadly, cause he's doing a fantastic job, but, but, so the gun one, the, so is it alright to put the antisemitism one on? We can just do the same one of last year.
Yes, sure, we'll figure it out, alright, um.
I think if, there's a lot of interest in the broader anti-hate one as well, you know. I think someone noted that it came up last year when we passed the antisemitism one. So I just wanna, wanna flag that, that's why I drafted that, so that we, you know, make sure we signal that as well as a council. Um, and for what it's worth, I read through, I didn't hear this carefully, but it sounded like Julie Greenberg and Rohit drafted resolution with respect to calling on Maryland State Senators and so on to raise awareness about what's happening. I'm, I'm fully in support of that as well, if we wanted to move that forward. But it would be good to set, if you're not moving them forward, might be good to set us some sort of a timeline, whether we discuss them again in the next work session.
Yeah, thanks for the suggestion, I, I think, I hope people can do their homework in turn and time for our May work session, and so we can look at the.
Well, this is April.
This is April, yes, please, I know it's warm, but it's April, okay?
Sorry.
Um, it's practically summer.
And.
We don't have spring.
We can then vote on the other two, we can discuss the other two resolutions, which is the um anti-hate one and the resolution reiterating the terms commitment to the Constitution of the United States and the laws. Um, so discuss those at work session next month, um, alright, uh.
Surely anti-hate is non-controversial, but would love to hear.
Yeah, it is, I, for me, it's non-controversial, I would just like to tweak the, the language a little bit to make sure it's all forms of hate, um, and, cause there's, even, even sports team hate, you know, I mean, there's, 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 um, more hate than is listed.
But, but just, just for me to understand, um, if it's just tweaking, is it, just for me to understand the process here, does it need to then come back to another work session, can, can we not?
No.
Tweaking between now and the next.
Well, I, I think the, I mean, it is coming back to the May session because at least two council members have not read the resolution, and so, um.
So I think it would also be good, like I said earlier, is we have the staff publish them so that we can get comments, because people, there, there might be some citizens that wanna add, you know, add more things to them. I mean, they're, they're, all these resolutions are very, are very good, but they're, they're, they might not be all inclusive, so. So, but, but I think it, it's good that we publish them soon, so the conversation and awareness really gets uh out there.
So the process is we publish them, um, prior to our next work session, is that the thinking?
Uh, I think we should have the work session first, uh, the discussion, and work session first, um, so that everybody's up to speed on the resolutions, um, and then we can publish them in their form that we have decided on in the work session.
Look at that, that. So at the, at the, at the May council meeting, only the gun violence one would be.
Yes, gun violence. Yes, gun violence one has to go forward because of the timing. Alright, moving on to uh EJ, uh discussion on the Somerset Parkland, I know you've written up some comments, but maybe you could just. Go over them quickly and see where we want to be.
Yeah, so just to quickly go over, so it's uh it's. An interest, uh of interest to both residents, most notably with the residents who come speak, the public comment period of the last council meeting. Uh so basically, as part of this year's budget, we have money in the budget to do a new um. Care plan for Vinneton Park, which is our forested uh nature park. Uh I began drafting the RFP for it and came across uh in some of the meeting materials, one that was previously done in twenty thirteen. Not really been able to dig up how much of it was implemented or if it was implemented, but the good news is either way, as a result. Nothing. The good news is that since we have that plan, we can use that as a baseline for the, an updated addition. Um I think something I, and then so I'm working on that RFP now. I'm being pretty careful with it, just because I know there's a lot of residents that care about Vinneton Park, but also. I've been heard from multiple residents myself and they don't always agree, so I'm engaging the town arborist, the Parks and Natural Resources Committee, the Environment Committee. Um on it, that way, um it can come, we can get the best product for use by the town. Um something that's kind of come to my attention is that. Everybody in town that's come to me agrees that Vinneton Park is one of the town's great resources, but not everybody uh agrees with. How important, uh or how it should be managed, so uh that's the Vinneton Park Care Plan and second.
I, I just want to think. So um not to disparage previous administrations and councils, but what happened is that. At the time that the idea came up is also when we ran to some um budget woes. Remember, we had this period, the budget was.
Well, we did have, but that was actually earlier, so I'm not quite sure. The budget woes were in two thousand ten and eleven.
But weren't we still having problems by two thousand?
Uh well, it might not have, I suppose we couldn't have dug out all the way.
So yeah, and then didn't we have like, were we still working on the town hall then?
Yeah, you were.
Yeah, so that's, so that's, so it's, but it's, it's long past time that we paid attention to one of our greatest assets. Which is our parkland.
At the expense of being, you know, showing how ignorant I am. Where is Vinneton Park?
It's, I'm making sure, it's one that runs around towards the pool.
Wait, so it's not out there?
That's the power park.
That's right, so where does Vinneton Park begin? Is it on Dorset?
It's, it, it's basically our border with Somerset House in the condos right there.
So how do we get to Vinneton?
Uh there's entrances at the pool, uh there's entrances off of the, our Dorset Wisconsin, the Dorset Wisconsin intersection.
When you say entrance at the pool, and down at the pool, there's a path to go up to.
Before the pool fence, third entrance.
Oh, the left, the left, that's, that's Vinneton Park.
Yeah.
Um that takes you up to Dorset, now I.
And then we, we could also monetize all this without making a profit by having guided tours led by councilor Revag. You know, park and the tree identificate. And, and the bee, we can have a thing here, the bees.
From my second comment real quick on parkland is the Somerset apiary, because uh. On request, the environment committee have been investigating ways to revitalize Somerset apiary because the volunteer beekeepers stepped down. And all the bees died, so we generally don't have any means, we just have a apiary. And so I have been in talks with the company who provides on one beekeeping services, uh they provide the bees, they provide a beekeeper. Uh they would provide jars, honey for us from that hive, uh educational workshops. Um habitats, educational signage, uh I'm still waiting on a final estimate, but this would come to about eight thousand dollars. If that's something the council wanted to consider, um if the council would like to invest in apiary, I would recommend that this be considered. As a budget amendment um. And uh for the draft twenty twenty six budget.
So tonight is your opportunity to discuss, rather than waiting till next week. Whether you, you want to introduce an amendment, but I think before you discuss the apiary. You, you should all ask questions about um the plan that. For the parkland and, you know, Jeff Lay brought up. He, 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 he has a position papers. And, and we've discussed with him that all the things that he suggests that actually are in prog, in process, but. We wanted to give council service the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Right, okay, um I had some.
Especially the president.
I had some thoughts myself, I have read the report um. The two thousand thirteen report, and I have been in Vinneton Park recently um. And uh Ivy is as much or more of a problem in the park now as it was in two thousand thirteen. I think it would be very good to get an updated report and to give the individual two thousand thirteen report so that. They can then see what's happened over the last twelve years and to understand how it's changed in those twelve years. Um because that will be vital information to us, in fact, so I would be very happy to um. Agree to a, a, a second report. Um other thoughts on it? I don't have, I don't know if anybody else has read it, the issue.
I read the twenty thirteen one, um I think that we should hundred percent do an updated analysis um. And I think it's to the mayor's point, I think it's hundred percent worth making an investment. I just wanted to flag two things for EJ as he moves forward with this. Is, I think you already mentioned, but there's been a lot of discussion since I hear it. At the kitchen counter, since my wife is uh on the PNRC about uh various. Investments that need to be made in Vinneton Park and various activities that is, that are going on, and I think Jeff Flape is, has, has. Made a presentation there as well, so as long as you're kind of cognizant of that and reflecting that. And the second thing is that there is active erosion happening and so whatever we can do to address. That or kind of reflect that in the RFP, I think would be important and the various sort of complicated dimensions.
Yeah, that was what of course Jeff Flape focused on with the.
Yes, yes, he's focused on it, um there are different sections in which this is happening, so. I'm sure whoever you subsequently go with or we go with as a town will be fully capable. Of, of addressing those, so I, I'm in favor of it, I think it's very, very important. So glad we are moving forward.
Alright, anybody else thoughts on it?
Yeah, um few things, um first, uh. Yeah, and I think the general point that we should do an RFP to get an update on, on the Vinneton Park plan. Then we have budget for this year, so this, there's no budget implication as such. I think that uh, you know, looking at the points that, that Jeff made to us, uh when he spoke here. I do think that independently of the management plan, I think the council does need to. Take a decision at the next council meeting on, if you can have his note here, items three, four and five. Which is, I think we need to direct the town code officer to monitor activities in the park. We need to assure that unauthorized vegetation biomass removal ceases. And we affirm that pesticide use in the parklands is inappropriate, this, these are three. You might say self-evident statements and I, and regardless of whether we're going, what, what's going to be in the plan. These things should not be happening, and I think we should reiterate as council decision and authorize uh. The, the town manager and the code officer to, to take these actions.
Okay, so I think it's a very good point, is this something, Mr. Town Attorney, that, that a resolution could be drafted? So that it's, so that the policy's in place?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, so, so are you uh. Asking your colleagues whether it's okay to have a town attorney draft a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I'm in favor.
To draft a resolution that would, that would uh direct the staff to follow all those suggestions?
Yes.
Do we need a resolution, uh isn't it already within the duties of the code enforcement officer?
That I think that.
We, we don't need a resolution, we need EJ and the code enforcement officer to act. Just wondering, I, I could be wrong.
Well, and how, how are you gonna empower the PNRC to oversee development and implementation of?
Uh yeah, just, just to clarify, uh Ron, I'm talking about items three, four and five only.
Oh, oh, okay.
Which, which, you know, would, i- i- if, you know, if it, if it's, doesn't require a resolution specifically, I mean, you, you could, you advise on that, but basically. Um you know, these are three things that are, that need to be stopped, that are happening, and I want to ensure. That town staff and the code enforcement officer take action and. I'll just close it out by saying that, you know, then I would like to get a report back from the town manager and the code enforcement officer. Uh the following month that. Certain actions have been taken, they are monitoring and so on and so forth, so.
So couldn't, but you couldn't, a resolution be drafted, Mr. Town Attorney?
I think it needs to be drafted, Mr. Mayor, because we, we do need to specify what vegetation is unauthorized. Biomass removal. I mean, uh, uh, do we, do we need to make it unlawful so that it's a citable offense, you know, then, then that's a code requirement? The more critical thing is the biomass removal, the, 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 the problem is that uh honeysuckle, which Jeff uh brought up. Is highly invasive. But um it, it's growing on stream banks, it is actually serving a function there of holding the bank together and stopping erosion. And so if somebody yanks it out off the stream bank, you're then going to get bad erosion from, from the soil, so the, the, the issue is. To ban unauthorized removal of things, because even though it looks like it should be removed because it's nasty honeysuckle. In fact, it is serving a useful function at that point, and you've got to think much more seriously about what you do under those circumstances, and that's really what Jeff Lay was saying. And so, yeah, my, my point is, do we want a resolution saying, don't do this and here's why? Or do we want an ordinance saying it's unlawful and you can be cited if you do it?
So what, what do you, what's your suggestion?
Oh, I, I would prefer the stronger one.
Okay.
It, and, and, and it's, it's the removal, hit also the use of pesticides. Uh and, and herbicides in the park, I mean, these things should just be flat out unlawful and I think should be cited, but that's what I would ask.
Okay, so do three of you want the town attorney to draft that?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Yeah. Alright.
And so, ju- one, one quick question, Mr. Mayor. Do we want to adopt the county's banned pesticide list and county law and let the county enforce as well, or? Or do we want to adopt our own list of banned pesticides and enforce it? We already adopted the, the county's um pesticide.
Okay.
So, so we need, but we, we want to enforce ourselves, so we'll need an ordinance. I, I think, I mean, I don't think we need to mention, because pesticide, it is removal, unauthorized removal of any biomass by any means, which could be by pesticide or by pulling, or. You know, in other words, it's just by any means is, is what we're considering. Well, that's, that's number four, and then number five is, I mean, is pesticide being used for anything other than the removal of biomass?
Well, maybe, maybe what should happen, Mr. Town Attorney, is you can work with councilmember Connor and president. Um Barr to come up with some language, because it's just an introduction and then there's.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, rather than take the time now, because I think president wants to.
Points, one is, one is Jeff Flape also uh mentioned that there may be some. Questions about the boundaries of the park itself, and where Somerset House begins and where the Somerset, where Somerset Town boundary is. And that might affect the plan, so I don't know, EJ or Ron, you have any thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, I can come up with a, a plat. But ultimately, to confirm boundaries precisely, you'd need a boundary survey.
Well, haven't you been suggesting forever that we get a boundary survey?
So Martin's additions, for example, had all their streets surveyed, so they would know exactly where the right of way begins and. The lot ends because there's been. There were times as to who's responsible for this tree, this shrub, you know, et cetera. So that, that may have been why I recommended it in the past, Mr. Mayor.
But Jeff, but you recommended, you recommend it now?
For the, for the parkland? I mean, it's. I mean, it's nice to have, but. Sure, it's gonna be expensive, very expensive.
It would be what, like twenty five or fifty thousand?
So I, I think Martin's additions, you know, ten, fifteen years ago paid thirty thousand for all their streets.
The properties that are above the park, they have a clear boundary. And I think that there are a couple of properties that they, they don't, they have no fencing and they have effectively.
It would be very controversial, it's probably like fifty property, it's probably every property.
Well, I don't believe it's every, but what, what could be goo- what would be good is language in your, in the ordinance that. Kind of addresses that, that, you know. That you, you cannot kind of encroach onto parkland and groom and take care of parkland. Beyond your own boundaries, so we don't need to do a survey, we just, we know where each property ends. We don't need to know where, how far, you know, what's the sort of survey of Vinneton Park, am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, I guess, the question is if, if it's a close call.
It's obviously in, in, in the, in the places, it's really egregious, it's clearly not a close call, so I think this will go a long way.
I think it's really, from what I've heard. From different people over the years is that every property that borders our parkland has been uh usurped.
Y- yes, but I think.
And I was there a few weeks ago and it's certainly looked like every property, but again, because the boundaries are not entirely clear to me, I can't. Through my eyes, I can't tell, this would really need to be, so that's why I'm just, I'm just putting it on the table that. I don't know whether we need to do, you know, whether there's a cheap survey or there is, there's an expensive one, but. I don't see how one cannot do something just to make sure that. The, the park, Vinneton Park's boundaries are clear, Somerset House, they're clear to our town residents. Because if somebody, uh, you know, I think if somebody starts putting, so removing vegetation, says, hey, this is, this is on my land. We can't, we can't enforce this.
Okay, let me ask the town attorney a question, okay, Mr. Town Attorney. So right now, let's say somebody who lives along the parkland decides to sell their house. And, and, and then after they bought, and there's no, is there a boundary survey, survey done then? No.
No, typically, it's just a house location survey, which doesn't guarantee.
Let's say somebody buys, somebody buys Matt Fink's house. And then two years from now, they find out that a garden that's on town land is, is in the um. It, you know, it's, it's not theirs, so do you think we could, can we pass a law that says that we. That they required to get a boundary survey when they sell?
What's the plat?
I, I, I think there's another way to do this, I mean, the, the, we have already code on our books where people can't cut down trees without getting. Approval from the town, and I think vegetation on a stream bank is critical to uh. The town as, as trees are, um and so. We can certainly have code that says people cannot remove biomass from a stream bank without getting a town. Permit to do it in the same way that we have code that. Says they can't remove trees, um and I think that's the way to do it, um we don't need a boundary survey to say that. Says they can't remove trees, um, and I think that's the way to do it, um, we don't need a boundary survey to say that.
I'd be open to ideas like that that don't require an outlay of fifty grand for this ordinance, so.
Yeah, I I trust, I trust Ron's judgment.
Ron, do you have enough?
Okay, yeah, I'll draft some.
Thank you, all right, we'll move on to a discussion on public safety then, um, and E J, do you want to lead that?
Uh, I can just begin by going over my comments.
I'm sorry, sorry, what do we decide with the A P R A, was there, was there something needed for us to decide?
Oh, the A P R A, yes, right, um, are we ready to discuss the A P R A now? Wait, okay, we'll move the A P R A to the next work session, and we'll move on.
Except you're voting on the budget and and it can be discussed on Monday if somebody wants to introduce an amendment. The the idea bringing it up tonight is that here, the town manager presented the facts. And if it would be easier if you want to move forward with this eight thousand dollar expenditure. To put it in the budget, otherwise, if you do it later, you have to move money around, so it's just up to you. Yeah, I I I I know we haven't done this public safety talk for some time, so maybe we should do that and talk about this A P R A at the town meeting. Because we put off the public safety for too long.
Okay, so we will discuss. A P R A next Monday, um, and get it on the agenda there.
Uh, so my comments on the public safety, uh, just put together some of the action items that are currently happening or in progress. Uh, this week, uh, we're gonna be, we, work will begin on replacing six sections of sidewalk that have fallen and disrepair. Uh, fifty four fifteen Surrey, forty nine oh four Paulstone, fifty five twenty nine Uppingham, thirty six seventy Warwick, fifty eight oh seven Deal. Forty eight twenty three Dorset in the handout, that's also in the online meeting materials, um, I have pictures of them all. Uh, and then there's one additional spot that is also slated for replacement, uh, fifty five oh three Uppingham. However, that is the work responsibility of W S O C, we've been in contact with them, they have the issue taken in, uh, but we don't actually have a time. Second, uh, the speed radar signs that have been talked about, the town of Somerset procure to T C dash four hundred radar speed signs. Um, to allow the town to gather speed data and traffic counts and to display, uh, notices, uh, or. The speeds to uh drivers, first sign has been posted, it's on the forty eight hundred dash forty nine hundred block Dorset Avenue. Um, on the downhill portion, meaning the Little Falls Parkway, uh, that location was at the recommendation, Public Safety Committee, so that's up now. It is um on, it's, so it's in, uh, I forget what the exact setting is called, but it's basically. If you drove there right now, you would not see your speed come up, but it is collecting data like, you know, so we're gonna have it up like that for about a week. So we can kind of collect data without, and then after we have a week of data, we'll then turn it on, and then that way we can kind of pair. Uh, before and after, and then the second one should be going up tomorrow, it will be going uh, uh, the forty seven, forty seven hundred block of Dorset. Uh, eastbound uh towards Warwick, the only reason it's up today is that we gotta replace it, which is a very minor, non-specialty part. Um, and then with Dewberry on March thirteenth, twenty twenty five, representatives from Dewberry Public Safety Committee. Uh, including Chair Komar Baswani, pedestrian safety working group, including then Chair, now customer member Roger Khan. I'd like to self perform the sidewalk into town, um, and then as a result of that sidewalk, uh, so. I noticed now I didn't finish the lesson, and so this little paragraph, uh, before the sidewalk into town, so as to provide, to provide a a way for us all to. Talk about the various issues and kind of get on the same page regarding everything, and then as a result of this sidewalk, Dewberry is gonna provide the town. An evaluation of what it would take to accomplish potential sidewalk expansion, as well as upgrade the existing sidewalks to eighty eight compliance. Um, and then they should be, they, that memo was that kind of uh. Evaluation was delayed because the chief engineering project got COVID, um, uh, he's back at work now, and so that should be any day now. I just sent, um, I requested an update on Friday, so should get that shortly. Uh, I also wanted to comment, now April seventh, twenty twenty five, the town of Somerset hosted a public forum. Second District Lieutenant Ari Elkin, the Montgomery County Department of Police, was here at town hall and via Zoom, was also reported, and the reporting was sent out to residents. As part of the weekly announcement, just kind of the two biggest takeaways were that. Uh, in twenty, in calendar year twenty twenty four, there was a total of three crimes reported by M C P. Um, two home break-ins and then one larceny, a larceny, I should know, was a tree. Um, and then I just wanted to uh kind of shout out, uh, Public Safety Committee Chair Komar Baswani. Uh, who, and I took this quote directly from uh one of his journal articles, saying most crimes are preventable by locking houses and vehicles at all times. During personal property, lighting properties, and generally being aware of one's surroundings, that's something that, um. That the town uh is constantly reiterating and important, and uh that's what the public forum kind of also reiterated. And so just keep pushing that message because it's clearly working in Somerset, um, and so those are just uh some. Public safety updates.
Have people written the flyer?
Oh, yes, I forgot to include is, um, right now, it was, it's, it was done last year as well, is uh we're producing a. Uh, postcard that will build up the house, uh, public safety postcard, so we did version ones last year, and then we're producing version two currently. Is Justin uh graded it, uh, all the credit for that. Credit goes to him and the Public Safety Committee, uh, Public Safety Committee for the content, and Justin for actually putting that onto the postcard. And so the Public Safety Committee is reviewing that version now, and so that's.
That's why our crime is so low.
Yes, thank you, yes, all right, any discussion, comments, questions to E J about?
And that's really, like, I mean, that's, that stat, I mean, the, the two plus the tree, I mean, that's really, I mean, very incredible. Yeah, we're lucky.
Well, lucky and also people are paying attention, they're locking their cars, which is.
But I wish more people would put lights on their house, you know.
Yeah.
Because that's.
Maybe we put that onto the postcard for the next go around that, you know.
Also, the uh officer said that everybody should have a camera on their door.
You should get the front door camera, you, if you didn't watch it, you should watch it, he was so good, wasn't he?
Maybe we should have some sort of campaign to light up your house.
We can do that. We'll refer that to the committee. I know, I know Chair Russ Wanney's on here, he loves campaigns like that.
Yeah, and also Huskers.
Light up your house number.
Can I, um, just, just a few things, uh, first of all, you did, thanks very much, this was really a very good summary, um. For, there there are just a couple of other items that, um, maybe we can get an update from you is. Where do we stand on these two intersections that the Public Safety Committee has uh sort of flagged as high risk? Warwick Lane and Cumberland and Devon and Dorset, and some of you may have seen on the list of Caroline Cooper's email as well, and. This is the, this is that same intersection, and so now we've got, you know, uh, some recommendations on Public Safety Committee to, to. To uh do some things there to improve safety, but also, um, my understanding is that. Uh, the the two uh residents at those two locations have been asked to trim back the vegetation. To improve visibility, so maybe you can just update us on where things stand uh on those two intersections.
Yep.
Um.
Can I go ahead and do that?
Yes, yes.
So.
Yeah, only one other point.
Um, yes, so on that, I will start by noting that, um, I did respond uh to Caroline Cooper. I don't think that response was on the, to the listener, but it was to her personally, um, second of all, yes, we've sent out notices, result, uh. Regarding overgrown vegetation to those properties, and so I'm gonna reach out and follow up with them on that to see what action. They're putting on taking and moving on from there, and then kind of also, and then kind of figure out. Uh, once we get a better idea of what that's gonna look like, um, taking a look at other potential solutions. Um, I will note that in the last, uh, couple of months ago, we did, uh, add a stop sign to the Dorset Devon intersection. Uh, because of some visibility issues, um, sort of some steps, some steps, we, I think more should be taken, and we're gonna take more. Uh, but some steps have already as well been taken.
Uh, is there, I mean, I don't mean to like rehash this or whatever, but I was just thinking about the other day about the Warwick and Cumberland. Is there a way that we could move that stop sign?
Yeah.
Because like, you know, that stop sign is pretty hidden behind their fence, and like.
Hidden behind their vegetation, which is in the town's right.
But I mean.
That's the poor.
But I mean, it, I mean, it's definitely like, the only solution that they have would be to pull up all of those azaleas, in my view. And because like, the azaleas are on top of that brick, you know, so like, if if the azaleas got pulled all out. Then I think you would be able to maybe see that stop sign, but short of that, I don't think them trimming their azaleas is gonna. Help with that stop sign.
I mean, at the school, at the school.
Yes, four, seven, oh, seven.
I can, I will, uh, take a look this week at having that stop sign, uh, see where we could, we can move it slightly to reduce visibility.
I just don't think that trimming is gonna do it.
I mean, that that's why, that's why the Public Safety Committee has proposed some other enhancements as well.
So, so you know, years ago, when these kind of issues came up, we used to have a consultant, a traffic consultant. I'm sure, I, you might have the tower by now, so that might be something that we should, um. Cause there are funds to pay for that, so we, we need to, cause that's what we used to do.
I do remember, but the council might want to feel that we need quicker action than that, and that.
Well, I I know, but you know, everybody has an idea, and we need, there there's a science to this.
Right, there were pretty clear recommendations from Public Safety Committee about ladder side, lighter ladder crossings and. Warning of stop signs and two.
By the way, also, we're meeting with the, you know, the the P T A leadership. Is concerned about a lot of stuff in that, in that area, so we're meeting with them, so. So, maybe council, maybe the public safety person will come.
Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, I think I would like to see what happens after April thirtieth, which is the deadline, I think that. The two property owners have been given, and then we should come back to whether we might need to have a traffic engineer or somebody kind of have a look at that intersection. Because, um, the problem is you can't see inside the book, I mean, um, and so. To me, adding a stop sign, moving the stop sign doesn't accomplish too much, because we all know that stop sign compliance is actually zero. So you can put that stop sign in the middle of the street, and people are still basically coming into that intersection. And then turning right or left, problem is that people on the sidewalks are, it's a blind intersection.
We probably should put a speed bump there.
So, so I think we do need to think, so anyway, I think, but uh just my last point I was gonna make on on the public safety is that, um. I'm just wondering whether it is, uh. Whether it would be agreeable to have this kind of an update monthly for us to track, because this is, once Dewberry's memo comes in, it's gonna have a lot of. Components to it, um, and in addition, we're going to have also the uh pedestrian lighting consultancy. I think there are.
What E J can put that in his report.
So every month, if we could have this as a standing item. To give us updates on where things are in time, you know, milestones reached and so on.
That's good idea, you know, you know that, that years ago, we required the Public Safety Committee. Or somebody, maybe the town to put in a crime report every month in the journal. I know this is like sort of ancient history, but maybe we should have something about, like a little box every month about. You know, with the report on that people aren't going to stop signs. But the problem with the whole thing is only a certain number of people reading any of this stuff.
But you know, for example, when the pool work was being done, I think, I don't know whether it was Debbie or Kabir, or whether it was pool committee, but actually. Every journal edition, there was an update, and I think it would be good to have an update in our town journal on. All the sidewalk improvements, the recommendations, what's happening.
We, we can do all that, but just know that, um, the people that are violating it don't read the town journal.
Well, the stop sign violation is not much we can do about that, but I think people do want to know what's happening.
We're working at the state level at getting uh stop sign cameras, and that, that does have an effect.
There's gonna be technology, we're gonna be, yeah.
All right, I move, I move wider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, bye bye.